Just Buku cars, but he's got one of those. I'd never even heard of it before. I'm literally on the ground in his garage looking underneath this car.
Yeah.
I've never heard of that. That sounds pretty cool.
There was a guy down in Danville. Danville, Ohio, that had a big garage. And it was, it was full of vintage, unrestored vintage cars. If he had fifty, he had a hundred. Cheek to jaw, nose to tail. You know, and he just shoved them in and, but it was cool. I mean, he had hundreds, obviously, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of inventory.
What's he gonna do with it?
I have no idea. This was, he doesn't-
He doesn't have enough time in his life to restore it. I mean, anybody our age would never have enough time to do that. They just accumulate it. The guy that is, you start out early in life if you don't have any money. You have kids and you don't have any time.
Yeah.
Had no money.
Yeah, I've done both.
There are. And then when you have time and you have money, can't find what you want.
Yeah, that's probably true. I would, one of my buddies drove for a number of years, nineteen sixty Willie's station wagon.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, wow.
A four-cylinder, you know. I would love to have one of those today. But, you know, they run anywhere between twenty-five and sixty thousand, depending on their condition. And to your point, as many of them have been set on a new frame and, and they've got a, you know, have a Toyota engine or something. But I'd love to have one.
I was reading, speaking, I was reading today and we were talking about the actual speed of a top fuel dragster. And how somebody in a brand new C eight Corvette with a running start passes the line, on a quarter mile dragster, passes the line at two hundred miles per hour. And this top fuel dragster will catch it and beat it before the end of the quarter.
Oh, incredible.
That's crazy.
Off this here.
Evening, everyone.
Good morning.
How did you see that?
I have to wear my hat. Until we get started.
I just noticed Dave shaved his beard.
Yeah, he does look a little clean shaved. You look, you look younger.
You think?
Yeah. I think so.
Took it off yesterday.
Okay.
Took it off yesterday. I just.
Well, you know.
I'm gonna be catching some sun and some heat and.
Feeling.
Talking a lot, don't do that.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
I made it through security, not getting targeted. Nothing removed or confiscated.
Okay.
It was good stuff, I think. Where's the evening?
The cats can do it tonight.
Do it, is it their last?
Is it tonight or tomorrow?
Is it tomorrow?
It's Wednesday.
Tomorrow, okay.
Tomorrow or Wednesday?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, then Friday, then Sunday.
Okay.
Okay.
Hopefully the Indians or the Guardians can do it. Geez, do they really stink up?
They were down by one run.
Oh.
But, um, when I left the house, but I guess the picture for the broadcast is not very good. So perhaps that will happen. It was only like the first inning or so.
Well, our bats aren't very good.
A couple games they've really loaded up and then just nothing.
Then they die.
Yeah. Frustrating. How's Haley doing? Everything?
She's good. She's been at school on Friday.
That's amazing. That's amazing.
She's got some pain in her leg, but for the access point, she came home today. She says, yeah, she was doing some sort of state testing or whatever it was in gym. And she was running a lot.
Oh.
That's why my leg hurts, so. She was off many restrictions as of yesterday.
That's, that's so amazing. That's great.
I was joking with Katie though, I said, if I kind of figured it with the way that I eat, I'd be the first one to have it.
That's good.
I kind of figured it with the way that I eat, I'd be the first one to have it. Gosh, she's doing good.
Good.
I drove by the stadium. Boy, is that looking nice.
Yeah, it does look nice.
The stadium? You know, I've got a question about that, because that does look amazing. You know how the old stadium was enclosed underneath the bleachers in the main section? Are they gonna do that with this? I wonder.
They might build something underneath that.
Because I wonder, because you know, they had what, the restrooms, they had the snack bar, and then they think like the, the groundskeeper or whatever means.
I think that's all in the new, I thought they were still gonna use storage under there.
I think they're gonna build something.
Because I thought they had put a lot of stuff in the.
Concessions. Yeah, that's where the bathrooms are and everything now, yeah.
But I thought they were gonna make that into locker rooms. Both sets of locker rooms are pretty bad there. That visitor sign is terrible.
That one is tiny, yeah.
And even ours is showing its age.
You know, I was gonna say, boy, it seems like they just built those, but I think that was like before I was in high school.
Ninety, ninety-three.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was my ninety-two, my sophomore year, they built that. We were, we were having a conversation with Ed Glass, who's the L S for something. Underneath, and a chunk of the ceiling fell between us, between you and us.
All right.
Like where Daryl is and Boo. I mean, it was like this big.
Could've taken somebody out.
Yeah, yeah. So that was his last straw. He was like, alright.
Well, did he learn not to yell and, you know?
That's what he said. He said, he actually said that. I would, maybe I shouldn't yell at you guys so much or something.
I talked to him about three times a week out there.
He's a good guy.
He's a great guy.
He is, he is.
He, uh, he'd do that already.
He was always a good guy.
Well, yeah, he was alive with his ex-wife. She died.
Okay.
His other wife passed away.
Oh, jeez.
But then I saw him get in the car.
And then he would stick for a while.
He was a wood nog.
But he thought it was bad.
Tree gets delivered, you gotta let it.
That's true.
No one sleep.
He is. It was great.
Before halftime, you know?
Yeah.
And then he did such a-
How are you doing?
Our dog was like, oh, good.
How about you?
He would do still.
I remember.
Do crazy stuff in the middle.
We would have a complete game.
Like, normally she sleeps essentially on my-
He wasn't afraid to try something in a different position. Now, who was your partner?
He's a creature. When we first go to bed, he sleeps on the floors. And there's like literally nothing.
We literally, we started out.
We take him out. And then, I get up at five, like, work out downstairs.
After the first two games.
Usually, uh, somewhere between three thirty and five o'clock.
Yeah.
We haven't had it.
You'd have to say like, well. It's not just for general.
My nephew.
Okay.
He was his junior senior. Two seventy-five, the guy next to him was six-four.
And then on the other side, they had a guy that was six-five.
You know, and then she said, oh, trash.
That might have been Donnie.
How you doing? Good.
For the coverage. There is, but you cannot, I cannot.
Really? You really asked?
Yeah. Because there are every house.
Just coming down this street.
Every house. I'd have to cite. It's not just, they're like, it's not.
She's like, why did we go to the mall? Which I could never remember.
Somebody did David, didn't they, out and take the furniture? But she's talking about like shielding.
It's a mystery.
Everywhere they should be seen.
I did not get to put it, she, she kind of said that's why I'm right now.
Okay.
It's one that we.
Okay, alright, yeah, thank you.
It's like what I said about. I don't, I get me first.
There's a new Dave here.
But I did see, it was funny, we were talking, and then I was like, well, did I lie?
You know, it's one of those things where it's trimming and oops.
Oh, I know how to do it.
And they get something from their board.
Hey, William.
Hey.
You got a note to call.
I didn't know that.
It was Nicky Corrigan.
There you go.
She's doing great.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Nice. Should've been one. I know, I mean, you know, if this awful thing club worked, we'd have to.
Tell that to the, to the bank, you know, only with a good parent.
You just gotta come swimming on Saturday mornings at six. You know, once you, once you lose. The swimming, or getting up early. I can't even sleep, you know, like days I don't wanna get up early. I'm, we're talking to the teenager, about five. Like, I find it hard for us to sleep.
I'm not sure what they're gonna put.
I agree. But why can't Steve? I think there's just a moon.
Well, again, I just.
Yeah.
Probably six months.
No. I did. Where that, then who else, what can repair on the nursery and the wood together, subpar. Right behind. I don't know what.
You know how bad it was for the astronauts when they came back?
Two brothers that were in the air.
Yes.
Air Force at Tonsu and the other ones. So how they treating?
Well, I'm.
Oh, yeah.
I do not share.
Although he did it.
Yeah, it's like an Instagram.
Yeah.
We had three foot hole. For the tree. Off the dugout, some water.
Really? It was nobody else.
It's really the going deep, something hard. Sorry, we left you. My bad, guys.
Yeah.
He hates his job.
Yeah, man, it's two dollars. Are you gonna say hope for better public policy?
I saw that.
It was like when you walked in, like. Oh, okay, wow.
I guess you can have this one.
Do you have another?
Well, I got one.
Oh, she's gonna have a bee?
No, she's trying to stop you.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I think.
Yeah, what is it, a marge?
I saw it written on my report.
Really? I expected better than that.
Stop from the door, you can't. Probably.
That's alright, that's alright.
Wait, were you gonna walk by yourself?
No, I think it tells me.
Yeah, I have this one.
It's not even, it wasn't, don't worry. So you're telling me they just abandoned it? Do you think he's got the connector right? I wonder if it was that. Do you have a?
It's just pressure.
That terrifies me.
I don't feel bad now.
I know, I don't know.
I, like, I remember.
Maybe I should email it. Go get like latest rate.
I am sorry.
Yeah, maybe if you seen it in the hallway, you'd be like. Might be.
I now call to order the city council meeting of April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is seven P M. Ben, would you please call the, uh, let's do the opening here first. Jamie?
Alright, you see it? Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are here tonight to discuss topics that will benefit our constituents and the Northgate community as a whole. Come, give us wisdom to make the right decisions. Let us not make biased decisions, but decisions based on solving the problems of your children. Be our leader during this meeting. Give us direction to make the right decision for North Canton. Open our eyes to solutions and help us make our community great for all who call it home. Amen.
For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Ben, would you please call the order? Member Matheny?
Here.
Member McLeeser?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Shroyer?
Here.
Member Vol?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Wire?
Here.
Seven Brown? Okay, I can have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from April third committee. April tenth, public hearing, and April tenth, city council. Move to approve. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Okay, recognition of the public, this will be agenda only. Uh, at this time, members of the public wishing to address council may do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Comments shall be limited to legislative items appearing on tonight's agenda only. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on both the screens. This will serve as the only recording for everyone in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from the process. Anybody wishing to address council tonight, please approach the, uh, table.
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven Fairview Street, southeast North Canton, Ohio. I am speaking on ordinance number thirty-six, twenty twenty-three, regarding, uh, I guess a total revamp of parking regulations. I am stunned that we've gotten to the second reading and this portion of the parking requirements has not been examined for its pros and cons. I'm speaking about the overnight parking for decades. More than decades. We have not allowed people to park on the street between two A M. and six P M. That has worked perfectly. I don't know what's prompting this. Is it individual households who are, have their garage full of storage material? Is it households who have developed their property with maybe a pool in the backyard? That they can accommodate parking around behind their house like I did years ago? This serves no one. Absolutely no one. And I'd like to know what's prompting this. It makes no sense. It has worked for the city for decades. I live on Fairview, but there are many other streets like Fairview that are very narrow streets. People park on the street during the day and to go around them, you find yourself meeting a car head on because the street is so narrow. To complicate situations on Fairview, and again, there's other streets in the area. We have a tremendous change in elevation. Whether you're going east or west, you suddenly are facing a car blind head on because you can't see who's coming up over the hill and vice versa. This has, I think, helped the city security-wise, because the city could be patrolled and you would know who belongs where. Now, your regulation allows people to buy a three-month parking permit for fifty dollars. It strikes me as you're allowing somebody to pay a fee to avoid a parking violation. People that can, I guess, afford the, the extra money. It allows people who have not planned their life to the homes that are in these areas. They're on small lots, and I have begged this city for decades to get rid of R fifty zoning. You're just perpetuating the continuation of R fifty zoning by allowing people to live a lifestyle beyond the limits of the property that they have moved into. I've had a neighbor, several neighbors over the twenty, oh, actually, I've been there for thirty-five years. One years ago, he had as many as seven cars. And every morning, he'd pull two of them out, sometimes three. And then he would take them in at night, but occasionally he would forget. He has passed away. Now I have another neighbor who's got several children who are now driving age. They would leave their car out all night long. And I'll bet you they paid parking tickets three and four times a month. Five dollars was nothing. It was a joke. How are residents gonna know whether this is a legitimately parked car or not? Will they have to get out of their, leave their house and go down and look and see if they're permitted? Fairview is not the only street. I can think of Hallam, um, West Bakersfield. There are very narrow streets. Also on Fairview or this particular troublesome individual parks their cars, it's directly at the intersection of Fairheart and Fairview, so people can't get out of Fairheart. They have been struck twice. One of them's, I understand, by a city vehicle. And that was in the daytime. What do you do at nighttime? My street is a cut through. People are flying down my street at thirty-five, probably close to forty. When a person buys a piece of property, my time's running out. Mr. Shroyer will be quickly to throw me out. Table this and give it some more study.
And would you please read the title of ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance amending chapter eleven fifty-nine, non-conforming uses, buildings, lots and structures, specifically subsection eleven fifty-nine point oh three E, discontinuance of use of the codified ordinance of the city of North Canton to lower the period during which a non-conforming use is continued while inactive from two years to twelve months.
Okay, community and economic development, Daryl.
Thank you. Uh, just to refresh everyone, uh, this ordinance deals exclusively with non-conforming uses. Those are uses that are bought because they've been grandfathered in, wouldn't necessarily comply with the zoning in the immediate area. And, uh, what we're attempting to do here is encourage the landlord to, uh, reoccupy a vacant facility, uh, within, within a year. If not, that conforming use or that non-conforming use will, uh, will go away. We believe this is, uh, integral to our overall redevelopment strategy. And again, establishing consistent zoning through the city where possible. As Ben knows and the administration, we have a few pockets where we have some zoning challenges where the, uh, community has grown around a use that, uh, today, if it were to come for the change, we wouldn't allow. As Ben knows and the administration, we have a few pockets where we have some zoning challenges, where the community has grown around a use that today, if it were to come for the change, we wouldn't allow. So again, this is, this is a, this is kind of a cleanup that has come through the review of the zoning ordinance. Questions? Make a motion, then we adopt the second reading of ordinance sixteen dash twenty-three.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify twenty-five parcels in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the Planning and Zoning Code in order to phase out office building zoning throughout the city.
Daryl, yeah?
Thank you. Again, as the administration has reviewed the zoning ordinance, it has concluded, and I happen to concur, that the office building designation is not needed. And so what the administration has done is look at these twenty-five parcels and wishes to reclassify them in a fashion that is more consistent with the uses in the area. If you go to page thirteen of your packets, if you have it, section one of this ordinance lists those twenty-five parcels. Note that where they have been, the O B. is being eliminated. It is being replaced by G B. A., G B. B., multifamily, or residential, single-family, R fifty. So this is not a widespread rezone up to the commercial level, where again, we're trying to get these particular properties in a, back to a place that's consistent with their surroundings. I will note that for the record, we have withdrawn the proposal for Schneider. We are going to revisit that, come up with some additional language that is better balanced for that area. We don't have a name for it. We don't really have the characteristics yet, but we don't believe that the Main Street designation is appropriate. So and again, we're trying to find this balance between rights of the property owner and the rights of the residential neighbors who would join those areas. Any questions? Second. If there are none, I'll make a motion, we adopt the second reading.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an amended and restated sidewalk performance bond between the city and McKinley Apple Grove Limited for the sanctuary phase three development as shown on the plat recorded in instrument number two zero one six zero seven two one zero zero two eight one two seven of the Stark County records.
Okay, this is Street and Alley, which is my committee. This is entering into the sidewalk performance bond. There's nothing new here. It's very standard. This would be the third reading. Any comments, questions? So I will make a motion to adopt.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-three dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance establishing chapter seven oh nine of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, thereby creating a facade improvement program which provides economic relief to Main Street businesses who update their building's facade in accordance with the recommended cohesive design standards.
Okay.
It's me?
Yep. Go for it, Daryl.
This is the second reading of an ordinance which establishes a new section, chapter seven oh nine of our codified ordinances. You may recall that in multiple master plans, we've talked about facade development and its importance. This particular ordinance establishes eligibility. It establishes an application process. It establishes design criteria. And what it proposes to do is to waive the permit fees for those projects dependent upon the cost of the project itself. See if we get it. Any questions? Again, second reading.
We had talked about the different ranges of pricing.
Yes.
We come up with those or those.
Yes, those for projects.
Permit fees, two thousand less are at up to a hundred percent.
Yes.
And those over two thousand are up to seventy-five percent reduction for permit fees.
Yes, that's in section seven oh nine oh three, D. one and two. So good lift on this. I think it's a good, clean process. The administration's in, they want something that's user-friendly. The language is clear, it's concise. No mystery on the application process. So hopefully, we'll get some, we'll get some takers. Any other questions, sir?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Move, read up the second reading of ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-three.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-six dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter three five one, parking generally of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Okay, ordinance and rules. John?
Okay. Patrick did a great job of explaining this during the committee of the whole meeting and again, on the first reading. It's actually going to be giving our police department a little more oomph in this on the ticketing and stuff. I think it's a twenty-five dollar fee and it could go up from there. The, the permit, it's, nothing's going to change on parking on our streets from two to five in the morning. Nothing will change there. Or two to six, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. This is going to give them a little bit more meat. Yeah, there'll be a sticker for those who purchase a permit, but they're going to have to go through some questioning and stuff of that nature. It's just not going to be handed away. So any questions on this?
I have one. Well, I actually had someone calling regarding this and Patrick and the mayor cleared it up and kind of asking similar questions, but it isn't just, you have to have a reason for it.
Right.
So possibly, if you have kids coming home from college, or maybe somebody finished college.
Right.
Or has a job, or got laid off and they need to move back in with their parents or grandparents or brothers and sisters. It's making us a family-friendly community.
Right.
Which quite honestly, we do need a little bit of. You know, and she said to me, this person said, well, when I had my kids, when they were turning sixteen, you know, I took it under my own and was able to build a driveway. Well, unfortunately, and I work with a lot of nonprofits, that is not the case right now, and people are barely getting by. And they don't have maybe the space, but really more than money. They're trying to pay just their bills. And so I think if we can offer this relief and if we see that it's an issue, we'll pull it back. But at this point, if we can become a family-friendly area in some of these places where people are maybe having to pull together as families and do different things, this is an extenuating circumstance. They have to put that through. This isn't just, hey, I feel like parking on the street. That's not what it is, and I don't know if people are dispelling that or saying that, but that is not what it is. And so I think this is actually good legislation and makes us look inclusive and responsive to our citizens.
Right, and then also, there's a, where if they get a ticket and they want to.
Appeal it.
Appeal it, we have a process written down how they can do that.
Yeah, and so just ask a question, so when you, when you respond, you can answer that too. How does it work with perco only on one side of the street? I mean, the permit would work for them in front of their house, meaning in front of their house across the street?
Well, if it's posted that there's no parking on the side of this, on a particular side of the street, this ordinance will not trump that. You can't park on that side of the street.
But if you got the temporary permit, you would park across the street from their house.
You have to park across the street.
Okay.
Right.
As long as you have a place.
Right.
So yeah, it was, you know, misspoken earlier in the meeting that this was two A M. to six P M. It's two A M. to six A M.
A M.
Not you, but someone else. And in spite of the hyperbole, this is not a panacea for, oh my God, everybody's going to park in the street.
No.
It's for extenuating circumstances that someone would apply. And you'd come in and you'd, you'd apply for it. It's not a given.
It costs money.
Automatic. The police department will vet that out and whether or not this is a real need and for how long and for what period of time. And then they'll have something that they have to place, you know, in their dash that identifies that vehicle as permitted for that period of time. This actually makes it easier for the police department to identify a vehicle as opposed to the current model, which I don't think, you know, is appropriately affect, particularly effective. Somebody calls in and it's, you know, written down in the police department somewhere that on such and such date for this period of time, this particular vehicle is going to be on the street. Many shifts that cover that, the people that come on different shifts, different times. Is the word getting passed around? It's a tremendous burden for the police department. We've tried to be accommodative and to this Warren's point of, you know, being family-friendly or being accommodative the best we can. This would be a better administrative handling of these types of requests. And we don't think that there's going to be any increase over what we've already had. And we will certainly be monitoring it with various software programs that we have that will be able to track the issues of these things and how it's going.
It really does give the police officers a little bit more.
Yeah, then the overall changes which you highlighted that those that are in violation will, you know, ratchet up.
Right.
A sequence of events that they're going to not want to go down that way.
And I was going to throw out there, if I may, because I agree with, you know, I wouldn't want it to be running rampant with parking from two to six A M., but I certainly don't think that this is what is going to happen. Because I think if you look at it, it's two times per year for three months.
Right.
So it's not like they can continuously apply for these and just forever and all times, if they pay fifty bucks, have a car in front of their house. So I agree with everything that Mrs. Warren said. I think that this makes sense. I think it's extenuating circumstances and, yeah.
And if you take up of the makeup of the homes, building or can, there are a lot of single garages with short driveways. So there are a lot, and we have to take that into factor too, with kids going to college and coming home or going from there. But there are other ways, numerous places to park.
Listen, the last thing they want to do is give us money. So they're going to still do everything possible to park in their driveway.
Right. Legally.
Legally, yeah.
Can I add something?
No.
No, Chuck. Can you please escort Mr. Osborn?
Brad, you know the routine?
Gotcha.
And this is people don't want to have to move their car.
For what it's worth, President Sroya, on midnight shift, it's common practice that whatever zone the officer is working, that officer would always get the permitted parking list. So that when they were on patrol, they knew what vehicles were parked and what streets and in front of what homes and things like this. And then if there was cars that they found throughout the night that don't belong there, then, you know, license plates are run, you know, is that person from out of town or for whatever reason? And then again, a parking citation could be issued, you know, for that. But, and I agree that in my time in service, we only had a few really extenuating circumstances where people asked for, you know, prolonged parking on the street. And it's not even taken into consideration a driveway that's getting replaced, okay? Or, you know, work or construction at your home. I think what this ordinance allows though is discretion too, to come in to play. We have a policy, we have procedures, but there is some discretion that's being applied here. And so I think this, this ordinance is prudent at this time, and as Ms. Warren said, if for some reason it has to be revisited.
Yeah.
Council is here to do that.
If I might, Mr. President, just add, I will say ditto to your comments. And let me just add, for those who might have a home healthcare aide, taking care of a, someone in the house, they need to park that car in the street for an extended period of time.
Great idea.
The bid is for the students here tonight, one of the reasons that we don't want parking, you've obviously heard about security and the police looking, is that on those rare occasions, those very rare occasions when we have snow, it's nice not to have cars in the street that we have to plow around. If you get into other communities where they allow on-street parking, snow removal, particularly in very heavy snowfalls, is very problematic. And so we have, I think justifiably, one of the best reputations for snow removal, and it's facilitating in large part because there's no parking on the streets between two and six.
Yeah.
To your point, those other communities have to issue parking bans when they anticipate that they're going to have to plow snow that night. And it's effectively, can you get the word out and talk to them?
I mean, even if you have a ban and somebody doesn't move the car, you still have to plow around it.
Mayor, is there any data to say that if your car is going to be broken into, it's more likely on the street? Someone did bring up that as well, like, is that more likely than you parking in the driveway?
That's a good question. I think it's probably more in your driveway.
Really?
I think so.
But it's unlocked.
It's, you know, it's. It's not so much on the street as it is, people leave their vehicles unlocked, leave your laptops, your checkbooks, valuable items in an unlocked vehicle. And what you might see on the street would be more of a vandalism type thing.
Yeah.
That they may want to shatter your windows or key your car or something like that. But I think in my experience, it's been more of vehicles parked in driveways, okay? Sometimes during the summer, windows are down.
Yeah.
And, and every once in a while, you get some person or persons going through a neighborhood, looking for something easy, credit cards, a checkbook, loose change, things like that. So I think it's really more on your personal residence than it is on the street. And the nice thing about us knowing what's on the street is, again, sometimes we found stolen vehicles, okay? Dropped off from another location, another jurisdiction. And so, you know, if I'm going down your street and I know that, you know, there's two or three cars there that are, you know, have permission for overnight for whatever reason, but we do check that, that's religiously on midnight shift. And, and we're also, and I, like I say, we have also given warnings to people sometimes who may not have had a traffic citation because we can run those plates and see if there are outstanding parking tickets or not. And sometimes it's nice just to, you know, put a warning on there and, you know, being friendly, okay? But if we see that vehicle out there again the next night or two nights, then it's a good chance to get a five-dollar parking ticket. But now it's been elevated to twenty-five dollars, and that might send out a stronger message in the pocketbook that, you know, we want to keep our streets clean and clear. And, and so there's a couple of things there. Did you want to add anything?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So I take a, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the second reading of this.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Revolt will second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance establishing chapter thirteen thirteen of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, thereby creating regulations for the establishment and maintenance of grading and drainage on lots in the city of North Canton, Ohio.
John, your opinion?
All right, we, we've discussed this and a lot of times, people are dumping a lot of dirt on their property and the grades going on the driveways, that water's going this way or that way off of the land, and it's giving protection to the neighbors, it's giving us some rules to follow and inspections for that. Pretty self-explanatory. So I'd like, any questions or comments on that? So I'd like to make a motion to adopt this.
Revolt will second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read the title of resolution thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-three?
A resolution thanking those companies, individuals, and firms who have chosen to make significant investments in the city of North Canton for their dedication of time and resources to the betterment of the community.
Daryl, thank you. You have before you Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-two-three. And this is counsel and the administration's formal thank you to the investors on the Kmart site. As you'll notice in Section one of the ordinance or the resolution, we are thanking Meyer, Chris Maggiore, Brian Cruz, and Steve Di Pietro for the investment. As I was thinking about this project over the week, since last Wednesday, I think what really struck me and what makes this unique is that this is a comprehensive development. Many times these things unfold piece-me. You know, if you're going to do industrial park, it might be fifteen years from start to finish. This is all going to occur at one time. And I think that is absolutely spectacular for our community. But it's important that I think we acknowledge the confidence that these four investors have made in our community. They wouldn't be investing the sums of money that they are if they didn't think they could make a go of it here and that the community would support it. And I think many times we don't have opportunities to thank businesses that choose to locate here. And as you've often said before, and you've heard the administration say before, we want to be business friendly. We want to welcome business, we want development. And this is just a very small way of saying thank you. So, questions or comments?
Now, the only thing I'll comment on is, I was at a meeting a couple of weeks ago and we were talking about the Mills Business Park and the Foundation Park, two big developments that are going on in downtown, in Canton. And when I was listening to the collaboration that had occurred, I mean, there was zoning that had to occur with Canal Fulton and Maslin and working with the different legislatures and foundations and that. We used to not be very friendly and we were very siloed in some of those things. And I think that's why we haven't had the development. And so to see this as maybe an olive branch and to see what our administration has done and the team that you put with them, one of the things that was really noted last week was this team of experts that you referred to. You did not believe that you were the expert. And I think that that's what I saw in some other successful projects. And maybe before we thought that we were or we just thought, all right, if you say no to us, fine, we won't do it or this. And I think it's really different this time. And I'm excited, people are going to die when they see all this stuff go up at once. Because that's how it's going to happen. And that is unique in a development. And so I just think that this is such forward momentum with the collaboration, with getting the experts, with us kind of learning a little bit about the process so that if opportunities present in the future, we're there and we're ready. So thank you for maybe changing the image of our community.
You're absolutely right, Stephanie. This constitutes a shift in thinking of about a hundred and eighty degrees. I hate to say this when I was much younger. You know, we had the Hoover Company. It was the goose that laid the golden egg. We didn't have to cooperate, we didn't have to collaborate. We had more money than we could spend. Those days are gone. And I think this is a recognition, this project is a recognition that we understand the world has changed. And in fact, this project changed from start to this finish. It went through a couple of evolutions to get us to this point as we were adapting to changes in national health policy and business policies, et cetera. So flexibility was a key, but, you know, I, I mean, I can wax on, but I won't. But I think this one-team approach, this use of experts to reinforce our thinking paid in this particular instance a very handsome dividend.
And when you said too, you know, we used to say, oh, we have the Hoover Company, we have all the money we need. It's not just about us anymore. We don't have just North Canton people working at Meyer or just North Canton building people. This is about Northeast Ohio. This is about Stark County. This is about Summit and Tusk. This is about growing our area. I mean, how many people grow up seventy-seven and come into our community each day? It's about the seven-twenty markets. It's about our Wednesday market here. We don't just, we don't, there's not a gate around North Canton that says no one else can come in.
Here's what I can tell you is that, and I know this from my economic development experience, investors investigate communities.
Yeah.
And it's not uncommon, particularly in the industrial projects, where someone will slip into town, they'll spend a week, they'll go to a council meeting, they'll go to the diners, they'll have breakfast. And they'll have a sense of whether this is where we want to invest our money. And I know there are communities when I was around that didn't pass muster and lost major projects. If we want to take this older, first-rank suburban community that we have, the R fifty community that Mr. Osborne referenced, that community eventually is going to present challenges to us. We cannot fix them unless we're worth investment because we need the revenue to do it. We can't have a community that is old and tired, that doesn't show any interest in progress.
Right.
And I look at this, for example, and the Brown Building has been removed from the corner of Charlotte. We've got new schools. The Kmart Building didn't get rebuilt. It got replaced or will be. That's huge. And as Patrick said at our last meeting, we are going to have multiple leveraged opportunities that are going to come from this up in that area.
For sure.
Can I predict what it's going to be? No. Can he? No. Can the mayor? No. But we're going to have them. And we're going to change the image of this community to someplace where people want to live and they want to work and they want to, most importantly, want to invest, either in a home or in a business. We'll get there. But as, what is it, Confucius said, "The journey of a thousand miles begins with a single footstep." We've taken that step.
And where we really took a huge step with reading social media and stuff. The athletic fields is a great, 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 great idea. So many people, tell me more, tell me more, tell me more about that. But that was really a great move on our part by putting the athletic fields back there.
Well, I think it'll also make a nice buffer between the development and the neighborhood back there as well, so.
Well, I think Jamie, and I think that's important because as future councils deal with this growth, we're going to have to, they're going to have to balance this need for economic development versus preservation of neighborhoods. We've got to find a way to do that.
Right.
And this is an example, to your point, of being conscious of that requirement.
Right.
It started as a vision with direction that built into a team with strong leadership that pulled together investment in the community by businesses that felt that there was a future here for them. And I think this is a springboard for what the future has for North Canton.
I would agree. Dave, nicely put.
Yes.
All right. We're grateful for the four investors so identified in this resolution. I'll make a motion that we adopt this reading of Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I just want to note this is the final reading because it's a ceremonial.
That is right. This is, this is a reading. And would you please do us a favor as maybe we could have copies printed after they're executed and mailed with our thanks to the investors?
Yes, we're actually required to by charter already.
There you go, you can.
Let's re-read, let's re-vote on that because, yeah, make a motion to adopt. We didn't get to go through all the way through that.
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution thirty-nine dash twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There we go. Okay, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty dash twenty-two-three?
An ordinance amending, sorry. An ordinance amending city ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-two-three in order to authorize a higher principal amount of bonds for the project and declaring an emergency.
Okay, if I'm in some property, Stephanie?
Okay, we need to amend, is this the one we're amending?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Let's see, da-da-da-da, there was fourteen thousand missing because of the interest payment. That wasn't included in the initial ask, so we're adding that to include the closing costs. Does that make sense?
Yep.
The appalled, it wasn't a final reading, so we can still amend that. So I move to amend.
Wait. Question?
Yes.
Can we do that? This is forty dash twenty-two-three?
Yeah.
That's the bond to increase it?
This is thirty-nine dash twenty-three.
A thirty-nine was the?
No, this was forty, we just did it.
Sorry, forty dash twenty-three.
So this was the economic development bond. We were increasing it by a million in additional funds. And then as the documents were prepared, the closing costs were not rolled in. So now we're rolling in those, which is fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand?
It's going from one million to one million fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I understand now.
Sorry. Okay, so I move to amend.
Revolt or second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt the first reading as amended?
So moved.
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt as amended ordinance forty dash twenty-two-three under suspension of the rules?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-one dash twenty-two-three?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the City of North Canton to be appropriated for current expenses during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-two-three.
Stephanie?
Okay, we had talked about some of these different expenses last time. Do you know, were any other comments beyond what we talked about previously or? No, nothing further after what we discussed with this. Okay. Any other issues or concerns? I move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance forty-one dash twenty-two-three under suspension of the rules?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-two dash twenty-two-three?
An ordinance approving and confirming, approving, confirming, and accepting a perpetual gas line easement for the real property known as being part of outlot number two forty-seven, Stark County Partial Number one zero 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 nine one seven five, binding between the City of North Canton and Ohio Chartered Municipal Corporation, Grantor, and the East Ohio Gas Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Ohio, and Ohio Corporation, Grantee, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, Stephanie again.
Okay, it's just pretty much as it states. Patrick, any other? It is what it is and we move the easement. Any concerns, questions? Kind of very standard, I move to adopt.
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Under suspension?
No.
That one needs?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, because it's, all right. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance forty-two dash twenty-two-three under suspension of the rules?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-three dash twenty-two-three?
An ordinance amending Chapter seven oh three, registration of rental units, specifically subsection seven oh three point oh four C of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to amend the inspection procedure for registered rental units.
Okay, John?
Well, currently this program allows up to three inspections with thirty days between each inspection. The proposed is to reduce the number of inspections to two, but increase the time between the inspections to sixty days. Makes a lot of sense. You know what it's like getting contractors and stuff right now, it's tough. So I think this will help us move things along in this. So I'd like to make a motion to amend, or not amend, but to accept this.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-four dash twenty-two-three?
An ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter nine thirty-five, water lines and hydrants of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to simplify water tap-in regulations.
This is the Utilities Committee firmly with rubbish? Jamie?
Depends on who you might ask, it might still be with rubbish. But this is one of the items we discussed last week. And so what we're doing with this here is, is basically we're repealing and replacing in order to address the change of tap-in fees. We want to make things maybe a little more attractive to people, a little less financially burdensome in an effort to attract more water customers. So I don't know if there's any comments or questions beyond what we discussed last week or any comments from the administration?
I think I would just add that, you know, as a deal in this arena on a daily basis, how important it is for us to continue to grow our customer base. And this is one way to do it. Decades ago, a previous city council made it so that it was very expensive to get city water by acquiring the entity wanting the water to tap the water main and run the line, establish a curb box, and then take it the rest of the way. All we're proposing is to go back to the way in that respect, what it was before. Has that changed with me? And that change allowed us to tap our main, to run it under the road, being control of our road, and establish the curb box. From the curb box to the building is still going to be on the entity or the homeowner to do that part. We're not picking up that. But we think that this will enable us to be competitive, but also allow us to have more control over who is messing with our mine. So it makes sense. Is that somehow?
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other thoughts? With that, I would move that we adopt the first reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-five dash twenty-two-three?
An ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter nine thirty-seven, water rates of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to adjust rates and clarify regulations.
Jamie, rubbish?
All right, stuck with rubbish again. So this is another item that we discussed last week. And this takes a look at water rates. And one of the things that stuck with me last week was the discussion from Mr. Diorio that a lot of our expenses are going up. I think we all know that, but certainly as it goes to the chemicals involved with the water and with running the water operation. So what this is looking to do is, twenty twenty-one, there was a increase proposed. This is going, and I think for, this year would be three percent correct, but we're going to, or excuse me, three percent would be in twenty-five and twenty-six. But this is going to change it to five percent increase for twenty-five and twenty-six, so, for the water rate increase. So it looks like you want to say something.
I have a question for you, Chairman. That five percent increase translates into how many cents per thousand?
So for zero to fifteen thousand, I was going to bring that up.
Well, thank you.
So for zero to fifteen thousand gallons in twenty twenty-five, it is a thirteen cent increase. And for twenty twenty-six, it is a, would be?
Thirty.
Seven cent, twenty-seven cent increase.
Four thousand gallons.
No, thirty. Oh, two thousand sixteen, I was looking at the next gallons.
Yeah, down here, that's pretty out of.
Sorry. Yeah, and that's fifty.
Yeah.
Does the average household consume between zero and fifteen thousand or is it more? Do you know, Patrick?
Between zero and fifteen thousand?
Yeah, or are most households in the next range?
Most households are in zero to fifteen.
Okay.
In fact, you know, many fall within the minimum billing, I think three thousand.
So I think to the point that you're going, this is a very minute increase. So I think to the point that you're going, this is a very minute increase. An increase nonetheless, but a very small one.
It is, and I've seen some people online saying, oh, I doubled my water rates. It would take twenty-five percent increases to double your water rates. So that hasn't happened yet.
And remember, with the water rates we were charging, we hadn't even watched them. And we weren't, it was like we weren't paying our bills. It's that simple. You would never tolerate this kind of lack of expenditure in your own house. You would be bankrupt.
Agreed.
You know, but this is an example of, you know, as was ordinance eight E, examples of how we can do something initially. And we had said, you know, we would do the five-five-three-three. But then when we looked at it, the data did not present so that we could keep doing that. And it just shows that at times we have to be flexible to either go forward and change something or move it back. And so when you think about the parking, we do things all the time, and we can pull things back. We're not like the toll roads. We can change things. And that's what's really good. And I think we have a council that's willing to look at those things and bring them forward. We amend all the time.
Perfect. Did the old man once say try?
What?
Did the old man one time say try? You know, it's changing.
Yeah, it's you. You have changed dramatically. I want that in the record. Daryl revolts.
Said change.
Said change is okay.
Well, on that note...
Can we add something?
Oh, yes, Chair.
So, you know, it should be noted, though, two things. One, that under the ordinance from twenty twenty-one, which was a five-five-five-three-three, the administration at the time opposed five-five-five-three-three. We were advocating then, as we do today, that it's fives all the way across. We were able to see then, you know, what we see today, and it's even more relevant today. It's just that you have the proof today that, hey, this is something that is spiraling up in costs, and we have to address it. And the second part of that is, this council no longer, and this administration in the future has no luxury of putting this off. This was put off for ten years. And this is why you're in the bucket that you're in. But the federal government has stepped in as a result of what happened in Flint, Michigan. Severe water contamination because the city council there and the mayor there put off for decades their water lines and to neglect to the point that it, you know, harmed thousands of people. Their water was declared to be undrinkable, unusable. And I'm not saying that's the case here, but what I'm saying is that the law is saying that we are required to do it, we're mandated. And there's some people back then on council didn't really understand that mandate. We're mandated by the federal government to do an asset management study. We have to do that. We have to be forecasting out seriously what need repairs, what expansions, what we need for our water system. Calculate those costs out, forecast them out, anticipating what inflation is today, forecasting that forward and saying, hey, these rates that you currently have aren't going to match. And what happens if you don't do it? What happens if you just neglect it anyway? They'll come in, they'll be happy to run your water system for you.
Wow.
So these are not options. I don't plan on going to jail. Gina isn't either. We're going to throw you all under the bus. Without question. So for those of us that won't be here, Miss Daryl is old, she's going to be in a home soon. And you all need to remember this, the younger people. It's that important. And it was shocking to us to hear this conversation that we're just going to turn our heads to it and just not do anything about it.
So if we raise it five percent, all right? A year from now, will we have to revisit it again?
We revisit this every year. We look at this every year to see what is it? Because there could be, what if there's a catastrophic failure of a water tower?
Exactly.
It's going to cost millions of dollars to replace. That's not factored into the rates today. We would have to go back and adjust. But what helps us on the adjustment is adding water customers. Adding water customers outside the city. And that's what we're looking to do in the conversations that we're having with entities outside the city and with our partners outside the city to collaborate and find a way that all parties can win. For us, that means getting some water customers.
And becoming more competitive, you know, in those rates is going to help us tremendously.
And it's also part of the budget process in reviewing now. So that helps me feel better that we...
Yeah.
A council's not going to come in, well, I mean, they probably could, but...
You can't change...
In this administration, we're running things like a business, so we're not going to let that happen.
But they can't come in anymore, right? Now, because now it's a law. Like, this federal government will come in.
You can choose to violate the law.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Which kind of...
I would not recommend it.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
All right, with that, I would move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance number forty-five, twenty twenty-three.
Revolt seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department reports. Patrick, you're Director of Administration.
Yes, I will have three things to mention to you. One, how Department of Natural Resources Park and Rec Committee representatives were in the city of North Canton last Friday to tour not only Dogwood Park, but some of our other fine parks, and to talk to us about our strategic vision for those amenities and how we would be looking to them in the future for assistance on things. And so we appreciate the work that Councilman Christina has done. Councilperson Christina has done touring the parks. Last week, she spent an afternoon with Deputy Director Farina going through the parks and doing something that I, in our conversations before, and making sure that we get a real detailed look of what's going on at the parks. I don't mean from, you know, activities, but conditions of the park amendments and whatnot. And, you know, there was a price to pay for this community when, and as a result of the Hoover closure, we went down to one person in that park. You understand what happened in the years ensuing. I did spend last Wednesday with Park Department at Whitworth Park, clearing brush, dead dying diseased trees from what is called Whitworth Park West. We've, you know, done about a third of that process of clearing. We, it took five dump trucks to pull the stuff out. And it's, there's still more to go, but this was allowed to just grow into brush and brambles and a whole bunch of other stuff that just made it unusable. When we're done, we will have doubled the size of Whitworth Park West. So that the folks at the Y who are interested in doing some youth sports activities on this big field now will be able to do so without risk of injury. That's one.
That's great.
Number two. Price Park. I can't make a goose sound. Oh, that's right, because there's no geese over there to make that sound. Yes, that program has been working very well. You know, there'll always be people in the community that you can never make happen. In tune with, if they can't be the captain of the ship, then I got to take the ship down. So we all know that this has been a plague to the community for decades. Administered humanitarian means to discourage the geese from locating here. And we just wish to continue that through the nesting season so that they nest someplace else. Thing with geese and ducks is that they have a means to remember where they nested. And that's what they'll return to year after year. So we hope that this will bear fruit in it soon. We also think this is going to be wonderful for the mayor's fishing rodeo. Because, you know, let's face it, all those ducks didn't do all their business on the walking path or in the grass. They did it in that pond. And so we appreciate that that will all be, is all cleaned up and will remain so through the mayor's fishing rodeo in June.
Patrick, have you really seen a decrease already?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
It's unbelievable.
I know!
It's unbelievable.
It's unbelievable.
And so why did we wait so long?
Well, you know, not everybody, let me rephrase that. There wasn't always an available solution. So this is a growing industry.
Yeah.
Starting out, and, you know, we were approached by one entity, I passed on that one. And I ended up talking with the city of Green and got some favorable recommendations from them. This is part of that collaboration. And that's how we got to where we are today. And yes, it's made a difference. It just, it has a spillover effect, when you think about this. Previously, especially during the summer, we would send our crews out first thing in the morning, every day, seven days a week, spray off the trail, spray off the trail. By evening, it's covered again. And people would say, you know, you never clean off the trail. Well, if you walked at seven o'clock at night or five o'clock, then you probably fought that. Because as soon as it was cleared, it was filled. And so this now frees up man hours to go do other things because we don't have to do that.
What was the cost to do that?
Well, it's, I'd say it's roughly in the area of, depending on how many visits. You know, it's a per visit kind of thing, depends how many visits are needed. But we're anticipating somewhere on the low side about seven thousand dollars, you know, up to twelve thousand dollars, depending on how many visits we need.
Right, and we don't know because we don't really know if they will... I've seen it work before at different places, and truly, they don't come back. But if people balk at that, that time where you had those crews and picking up and disposal...
Yeah.
Huge. Like, it'd be funny, it'd be actually interesting to do kind of an hourly study to say, well, this is what we spent on it.
Yeah, and although we could clear the trail, the walking path...
Like, you couldn't go to the grass.
You can't take...
No.
You can't have a picnic. That's for sure. Yeah, that's great.
It's a great thing, truly. Okay, finally, I wanted to pursue it to municipal ordinance. The administrator is required to provide notice to city council upon changes in rental rates at the Civic Center. I'm giving you this verbal notice today. We'll submit the notice to the park during the morning. We've already typed it up. Presently, Monday through Thursday, it's five hundred dollars to rent the Civic Center, the big hall down here at the end of the building. Friday, Saturday, Friday and Sunday was two thousand dollars. And Saturday was twenty-five hundred dollars. Of course, there's a cleaning fee, which is subject to market rates in the bidding process as appropriate. And the cleaning fee is two hundred and thirty-eight dollars to clean that facility. So you recall that last year, the administration made a change on rental policy, and we removed ourselves from the wedding venue business. What we found is that invariably with every wedding, there was damages to the building, damages to the facility. And regardless of how much we would increase the security deposit, it didn't stop the damages. We went for a couple hundred dollars, up to like fifteen hundred dollars. But you know what? Sometimes people looked at that as just as a license to go do what they wanted to do. They were required to pay the deposit upfront, so we had the money. But then we would argue about how much of it should go back. And it just created such an environment that it was costing us more money to rent it out than what benefit was being derived from it. And, you know, virtually, you know, ninety-plus percent of the people renting it were not from the city of North Canton. So it just didn't make sense anymore. So as a result of that, though, since we do not allow alcohol in the facility and we do not, you know, we're not doing any weddings, it does require us to start thinking about other venues or events that could go on there and what rates they should be paying for that. So we don't think, for instance, if a, if a, an AARP meeting was to be held in that venue that it's on a Friday, that they should pay two thousand dollars. That's not competitive with where we're at. So having done a little bit of research, we feel that the Monday through Thursday rate at five hundred dollars, which is what is presently, is the correct rate. So we're going to keep it at five hundred dollars. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, though, we're going to drop from, you know, twenty-five hundred to two thousand, down to seven hundred and fifty. And we think that that will get some additional use out of that because the rate is more critical what can go in. We have, whether it's heritage groups, garden groups, civic groups, we get interest from, at those rates from what we had from last year, that is, they're not going to give anybody to rent them, as a result, nobody has rented. But we've taken the time to think about it, see what kind of fielding of questions we were getting, who was interested in the type of rental, look then around where we're at. You take seven fifty is the appropriate number. So that's what I will note formally in writing to the council. We're required to do that, and then two weeks after the notice has been given, the rates will go into effect.
What about, like, graduation party stuff of that nature?
No alcohol.
No alcohol. And how do those, like, for weddings, we are just trying to, we eliminate it, I understand that. Are we trying to push them over to Arrowhead?
Anybody that calls us, we always recommend Arrowhead. They give them the contact information to go down there. If you follow, you know, a lot of the wedding business, it's kind of, it's like a barbell approach. It's on two ends, very little in the middle. On the one end, they're looking to get married up at City Hall, the mayor, do the marriage. Daryl has done a number of these, the previous mayor's done a lot of these. I mean, that's one end, it's very low cost. And then there's the high-end exclusive, you know, gervasi experience. You know, they're building new venues out in Jackson Township, or it may even be Lawrence Township. It's out that way.
Yeah.
Trying to recreate that kind of atmosphere, that's what the thing is today. So we don't see a lot of that, and Arrowhead doesn't see a lot of that either at this time. Arrowhead is getting a lot of other use for other events, so...
So even if we increase the deposit, it's not worth it for us to do the weddings and...
The deposit didn't discourage the damages.
So can you give me an example of damage that was...
Punching holes in the walls, destruction in the bathroom floors. Just, you know, breaking chairs, just, I mean, the fifteen hundred dollars didn't cover it, and then you got the administrative expenses.
Following up.
Following up on it, making, getting it done, showing them, and accounting over and finance it off. It involves their department.
Yeah.
Who's reconciling how much this is, how much is, oh, can we cut the check back? It's just a litany of things, it's just not something that we're equipped to deal with.
It's too bad because if you're always looking for venues, it keeps them local if people are trying to go out, and so it helps, whether it's Bill and Mary's in the morning or whether it's a hotel or, you know, different things. But, yeah, I get it.
Well, and I think in addition to that, it was the staff having to come out, show the bride, then show the mother of the bride, then show the mother, another date they want to come, the father or the mother groom wants to come, and the caterer. And then the photographer wants to come and check the lighting. I mean, it was just a whole mess of, we're not, we're not...
We're not equipped, yeah.
What percentage is the rentals? How many times do we rent this a year, would you say?
Presently, I would say it's a handful. Previously, when there were weddings, I would say it was dozens.
I think the seven fifty will attract some more nonprofit-type groups, which is nice. I mean, fees definitely stop people in nonprofits from renting, so that, that's kind of a welcome for them, which is good. I'm glad you looked at the pricing.
And just as a final note, Patrick, you know, this is a civic center. And to Stephanie's point, the intent was, when this was created, that it would be a meeting place, not a wedding venue.
And that's happening. I mean, with the collaboration with the library, and, I mean, we're here two days a week doing senior programming, and Wednesdays, the farmers market.
Right.
So that's three days that this building is being used really actively.
True civic activity.
Yeah.
Yes.
As opposed to a private party.
Right.
So this requires no council action. That ordinance that was passed previously gives the administrator the authority to do this just with notification of council. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Gina, Director of Finance.
Um, I just wanted to announce in two weeks will be our new utility billing. The software is called MuniLink. And the new payment portal, MuniLink partners with Invoice Cloud. So the online payment portal will change. The MuniLink utility billing software will offer all sorts of new self-service options. So we'll encourage you, you know, in a letter in your utility bill that will be going out at the end of this week, first of next month, will be the last one run from the old system, and there'll be instructions in there on what to expect, what not to expect. But call us if you have questions and we'll learn with you as we transition to the new system.
All right. Thank you. Mayor?
Oh, well, thank you, President Soria. Appreciate that. And I thank Councilman Daryl Rovol for giving me his 10 minutes I had scheduled. But anyways, I'd like to bring a few things to council's attention. First of all, welcome to the guests that are in the audience today. And if you need your papers signed or anything for your assignments, where any of us can assist you with that, okay? And thank you for your patience on that. Also, I want to thank the passage of the resolution in recognition of the economic development in the businesses that seek to locate here in North Canton. And that was very kind of you to come forward with that resolution. I'm going to apologize, I will not be here next for the committee as a whole. I was invited to attend the National First Lady's Library
Oh, yes.
For, on that May 1st, on the council or committee of the whole. And it's a special invitation prior to the opening of the life, Legacy of Japhlyn Kennedy Onassis. It's called Beyond Camelot. So I, with that being said, I just wanted to introduce a proclamation for the month of May, since I will not be here on the 1st. And again, it's just to recognize at this time of year, that this month of May, again, is for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. And I do this in cooperation with the American Bikers Aimed Toward Education. It's called HABATE of Ohio. And it's an organization that promotes the operation, training, and awareness of motorcyclists. And it's just a proclamation to encourage our citizens to understand the safety that's involved as motorists, and also that the sharing of the road is essential for the safety of all. And so I'll introduce that proclamation. I'll proclaim that on the 1st of May, okay? On a side note, too, Earth Day, am I going to cut into Christina's? Okay. If any of you had an opportunity, it was a rainy Saturday, but our Earth Day, our recycling fair that had electronics and paper shredding and recycling, and the organic plant sale was, again, a success. And it was hard to believe, but even in that rain and that cold, we had people lined up to participate in the recycling program. And that's in cooperation with our North Canton Public Library. And I think that was maybe our eighth year of doing that. And so, again, we'll be there for next year.
Can I give you numbers?
Yes, please.
334 cars, which is a record, through the paper shredding line, and 196 through the Gaglil and electronic recycling lines.
Very good. I could use any other recycling...
And the weather was horrible.
Maybe it helped. People stayed in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the shredding.
That's great.
On a, another note, that I just want to bring to your attention, that this Saturday, April the 29th, the North Canton Little League is celebrating its 75th anniversary. And I have a proclamation that I'll present on the 29th, when I throw out the first pitch as the honor that is given to the mayor. But I will have a proclamation, we'll issue that to that day. But most of all, throughout its 75 years of teaching the importance of community within the sport of baseball, where each player values one another, believing in open communication, creating opportunity for youth to learn, grow, and feel part of a team, and modeling good sportsmanship, being kind, approachable, courteous, polite, and open-minded, and preserving equality, caring, and a structural environment. So the history of our North Canton Little League, which was granted in 1928, and with that, I have other information on how the early fields that were at the end of Sixth Street Northeast, a part of, adjacent to the Hoover Factory, a gentleman by the name Fred Hoof, for over 30 years, maintained those fields. And those fields were dedicated in his name. And then it was in May of 1999 that a friend of our city, a friend of the North Canton Little League, and President Gary Giammarco, Dr. Giammarco, officially opened the Hoover Community Reserve Fields Complex on East Maple Street with seven new baseball and softball fields. So I will present that proclamation on the 29th. And I just wanted to share that with council, that if you have an opportunity to swing by on the 29th and visit, another hallmark in the history of North Canton, so.
They still do the parade, correct, Mayor?
Of players onto the field, yes.
Oh, they don't go down the street like they used to?
No.
Oh, okay.
They used to, but that was not, that wasn't exactly brought up yet.
Oh, no.
So that could still be in the planning. You, I don't know if you spilled the beans or not there, John.
Well, no, my sons were participants.
But it's food for thought, okay? So we'll, we'll see what happens on that. President Soria, thank you very much for the time.
I do have a video of the mayor throwing the first pitch out two years ago. And it was a strike.
All right.
It had some velocity behind it, so.
A little bit low and outside, but I think I caught the corner.
It was okay. I think, I think it was a strike. It was good. It was impressive.
Thank you. All right. That's all I have.
Council clerk, back.
I have no report.
Okay. Moving on to council reports, Ward One, Jamie.
All right. I am not going to be too long-winded tonight. Mr. Mayor, you shared words about the Little League that were much more eloquently than I can do. But I just wanted to say that, again, congratulations to them on 75 years. My son is a player on the A's. So I will be there this Saturday, rain or shine. We're hoping for, hoping for shine, but I think it's going to be more on the rain side. But congratulations to the Little League for 75 years. So, and I'm looking forward to seeing you throw out a strike, so. And that's all I have.
He did it two years ago. All right. Moving on to Ward Two, the freshly shaven David Matheny.
So also, Chairperson...
Pan the camera. Get the camera on him.
Personnel. We have a new officer in our police force on April 11th. Air Wilder swore in Natalie Shingler. Natalie is, has completed the Officer Peace, Ohio Peace Officer Basic Training Program at Kent State University back in 2017. Was a law enforcement officer with Stark Parks since 2018. In February of 2020, she gained a dual commission through Walsh University, working part-time as a member of campus police as well. Officer Shingler became highly recommended from her previous employer, and we look forward to her continuing her law enforcement career as a North Canton police officer. So congratulations to Officer Shingler. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Ward Three, Stephanie.
Uh, just a couple things. We were talking a little bit about trash cans with the mayor and the Director of Operations prior before the meeting started at all. I'd had a resident call and ask about trash cans. And I know that when we first had Kimball and we got the trash cans, and I don't know if you were on council at that point, Daryl, you weren't, but the idea was that they were supposed to be hidden. And we have not been able to maintain that. They're just, they're very large, and they don't fit in people's drive garages, and it has been an issue. But we've decided, I think as a whole, it would just be, like Patrick said, enforcing 5, 6,000 tickets. And it just isn't somewhere we want to go. If you leave your trash can out for days upon days, you can always call, and we would send somebody out at that point, correct, Patrick?
If there's left at the curb.
Curb, that's what I mean. Which really, I don't see that, and I don't know if anybody else in their wards really sees that.
Every once in a while.
Yeah.
And maybe they're gone, yeah. And I don't think it happens a lot, or you feel like people are pretty neighborly and will take them in. But I wa, I wasn't as clear about that as well, and so I just wanted to bring that up. Any thoughts?
It really should be something that our council clerk brings to us, the ordinance to repeal. Do you have an ordinance on the books that there's no possible way to enforce it?
I thought the only thing on the books was it had to be 24 hours, they had to be removed from the curb.
When we wrote it, you weren't supposed to be able to see it. Like, or you had to have it covered.
Shielded.
You know, shielded.
Shielded either in your garage, behind the house.
They must not be visible from the public right of way.
Yeah.
And, I mean, even when I was coming down East Maple, I was like, okay, there's one, there's one, there's one. So I just wanted clarity, and I will definitely reach back out to that constituent. And we realize it's unsightly. It just, again, it goes back to the single driveways, the single car.
Project.
And, and enforcement.
It's an ordinance that should never have been passed because an analysis wasn't done as to what the effect would be of going with these large containers for trash. And remember, at the beginning, they had the little blue bin for recycling.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
That got dubbed as another 95-gallon, you know, container. And no one really thought through, given our housing stock. Someone here mentioned earlier, I think it was you, John, about so many houses that only have a one-car garage, they're not attached, there's houses that don't have any garages at all, then there's two-car garages. And I will be the first to admit that I drive around and see that those garage doors are up there full of a lot of stuff. Like, there was the stuff market, it's all in there. And they have, they have their driveway built, right? But, you know, we can't effectively go into people's houses and say, you know, you have too much stuff.
Right.
You know, so that's just, that's, that was existed then. It was a known entity then. But yet, the city moved towards that, that direction, and it was, there was no way to, there's no way to unring that bell now.
No. And remember, at that point, too, recycling, they were like recycle, recycle, we get money back, and it was paying for a small portion of things, and now we aren't even seeing that reimbursement.
Correct.
So, okay, so I did want to mention that. And the other thing I wanted to mention, it kind of goes along with where our whole community as a, as a whole Stark County is. The mayor and I were together a lot last week. We just kept seeing each other from this, and there were so many events last week, nonprofit events benefiting so many entities. So the mayor and I were both at Celebrity Cuisine benefiting hunger. Then we were at Conquest Hope Gala for those that battle addiction. I don't think you were at the Junior League Women of the Year, but I will say Linda Ganser was, was one of those people, as well as Renee Powell, both very deserving. Renee has done so much in my ward, but so much for Walsh, and she doesn't have to. I mean, that's the kind of volunteer that you want, and for the Cleveland Clinic Mercy Medical as well, and just different entities. And then I know there was a United Way, did you know the United Way one?
The United Way, but also Whole Lot of Love Coffee Cafe. That fundraiser raised over $100,000.
Wow.
For, in their first year for the...
For using, um, is...
The cafes, uh...
With kids with disabilities.
With special disabilities.
Special needs, yes.
With special needs. And I had, I was down there with Beth this morning, having a, a new frappe that they were testing. And it's called the Almond Joy Frappe. It'll come out next month. But anyways, and I said, for you to gain that much in, in your first year fundraiser, it was very exciting.
Right. And I know Conquest did over $100,000. I forget what Hunger Harvest or, but I can get a regional food bank. But I guess my point is this, is you have all these agencies, and for people that are from not this community, they don't realize how giving this community is. And you don't walk into other communities and see that kind of support again and again. And so to have the mayor represented, he doesn't have to go to these things, there aren't comp tickets for these things, but to be out there and show that support is really significant. And they are, they're just going to keep continuing. But I think that shows that whole community atmosphere that we're all feeling. Conquest isn't just for people from Canton or Louisville or East Canton or Fairless, it's for everybody in our community, as all these are. We have just as, not maybe just as many food pantries, but we have food pantries here that are serving those in North Canton. We have people that have kids with disabilities and special needs, and this is what we support. And so I'm just really proud of all that we're doing in our community, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Four, John.
Oh, I got a couple phone calls. I want to thank Patrick for, I had three calls about Price Park. And they were so grateful and really, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you. I had one call today about what work we've done over at Whitworth. And I went by and looked, and boy, it does look good, you know? There's some more work to be done there, and very, very, very good. And that's my report today. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Daryl?
Couple items. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for his sensitivity by not reminding the community of the first mayoral pitch in 1999, the Little League Field. That pitch did not make home play. One bounces, okay. I think it was at least one.
Oh, you think that? Yeah, I was going to say.
But on a more serious note, you know, we talked about the importance of, of, of rereading previous legislation, older legislation. And I, and I, you know, many times, there's so much going on, but the administration and our clerk are actually doing that right now. And we did, we, we touched on three tonight that are the result of rereads, to go back, to look at stuff long forgotten in the past and update it. And I, I think, hats off to our clerk and the administrative team that's supporting him for that. And it's important that activity continue into the future. Whenever, 10 years down the road, wherever we are, we've got it, we've got to make sure we're doing that. Another note, Thursday, I was out at Arrowhead not once, but twice. My bride and I walked through in the morning, there were 50-plus people at the pickleball court.
Come on.
No, I'm, I'm dead serious. So remember, you got 24 playing and there's 24 waiting or so. I mean, it's, it's huge. So we were back out at night, the course had over 100 cars in the parking lot. Think about that a second. 100 cars in the parking lot, a little bit of pickleball action, but not much. But we ate at The Grill, all right? It's open to the public. The food was fantastic, absolutely fantastic. And we had the pleasure of sitting out on the new patio that has been built with the new patio furniture. And we had great service to boot. So the food is terrific, it's reasonably priced, the service is great, the ambience is wonderful. I asked one of the guys, one of the golfers who was moving through, I said, what's the course like? He says, it's terrific, it's great.
It's great.
And so there was a group of golfers out there who were, amongst whom was Doug Foltz. And of course...
What did Doug say?
Doug, Doug had nothing but praise. So I don't think he's going to be starting a golf course, but he's content to play at this one. So this notion that we're gradually improving this community asset bit by bit, we talked about weddings, the place clubhouse looks fantastic. The food is wonderful. We're getting, as, as we know from regional planning, the reviews are terrific. The staff are tremendous salespeople, they brag about the service, they brag about the food, and they deliver. And of course, the people who are coming in to buy a round of golf are happy.
That's great.
So I look at where we were 36 months ago and look at where we are today. I mean, we don't talk about it, we don't see it, but the reality is, the administration has really turned this operation around.
When we see you at the open house on April 28th and 29th?
29th and 30th.
Sorry, 29th and 30th, there's an open house to, for the public. You can go, there's some free hors d'oeuvres, and then there's a...
It's on Saturday.
I may be there.
Or membership, if you join that day.
Yeah, I could, I could, I may do, I may have a surprise for the pool. I don't know.
You need to eat lunch.
I would also like to comment on one of your comments.
Yes.
Really can't be underscored enough when you talk about these things that we're reviewing, going back and through, right? If the future council's view of the role of the clerk of... If the future council's view of the role of the clerk of council is the traditional role where clerks just spend their days typing minutes for baby, you never get this. That's what we used to have. That was the old way. That position and for the salary that it, that it carried resulted in an asset that wasn't being utilized. So we've redefined the role. The clerk of council is, is really a sidebar position for what is Ben's primary responsibility of director of public policy, public policy analyst in IT systems. And he is bringing, that now is bringing such tremendous value to us. You've talked so many times about the data that we're collecting and being able to analyze on our rental registration and that kind of stuff. But it's also this other part of being able to review and then having capable assistant clerk of council being here, here, to assist in other people that we're bringing in intern and, you know, and this kind of stuff that is developing, is giving you all the ability in a way as elected officials to be able to have something valuable to work from. That didn't exist. It required you all to rethink the role of that which we did, and you should be commended for it.
Well, and I remember us talking, and I was on that search, and I was like, this is ridiculous, that in twenty twenty-three someone is spending. Because I remember, we used to have two people, if you recall.
Yes.
That just typed minutes and let somebody, you know, in the door. And we said, we have to think differently. But you weren't the administration that said, no, this is how it's always been, this is the way the other entities are, you know? And that's what allowed this to move forward. One other point, which is really valid, is when you think, so DePietro is, has changed the format of what Arrowhead is, correct? If he had had a bad relationship with us and it wasn't working, and we were saying, no, 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 we don't want you to do that, do you think he would have put his new restaurant at that space?
Right.
So again, it shows how we're working with individuals, what we're doing to move things forward, and you don't know sometimes how that connection is going to benefit us later. And even if it wasn't him, he would then tell somebody, he knows people in the restaurant business, hey, they're doing things right now. They're making really smart decisions. This would be a good plan moving forward.
Well said. So anyway, that is my report. If, you know, like I said, Arrowhead's got to be, you can call The Grill, you can get Curry out, it's terrific, the burgers are wonderful. Mr. Gyorio favors the blueberry burger. I take, I'm pretty much of a traditionalist, conventional cheeseburger, but it's great. And if you haven't, on a Friday or Thursday night, go out and enjoy the patio. It's terrific. Really looks grand.
That's awesome.
Okay. Thank you, Daryl. Christina.
So I think we can call tonight like the pride of North Canton around the council table, right? Because I, I'm just going to echo what so many of you've said already. It was a year ago, last weekend, I was getting like the Facebook memories that we opened Dogwood Park with the big banner and Catherine and Brian and just everyone who was involved in that. So one year ago, we did that. And look, I mean, it's, it's been amazing. And then this weekend, as some of you have mentioned, we have the, not a grand opening, but an open house at Arrowhead to show off the improvements there. So, I mean, two huge, huge projects within a one-year time span. So as has been mentioned, Saturday and Sunday, twelve to two, drink specials, free appetizers, ten percent on pool memberships. When I was with Catherine Farina last Friday, she showed me everything that's been done there. And the staff is beaming with pride over that space, and they should be. They're informed, they're proud. As Daryl said, they are like selling that place because they believe in it. I deemed that day that I was there, this is my new happy hour spot, like I'm going to start inviting friends.
I will meet you there.
At Arrowhead. Like, I'm like, why am I not coming here? This is crazy. It's so nice, it's so great. There's not a single vegetarian item on the menu, but I'm going to talk something about that. Other than that, it's a grand slam.
Hey, you do have tater tots.
And I think mozzarella sticks, but not an entree. Anyway, it's fine. But Brian Hill was there when I was there, and he just, I mean, his pride, it's incredible. And his, God, that guy's smart. He knows so much in his history here. He's such an asset. So there's that. And then let's stick to the pride in our administration. I've been contacted the library by two different people from admin who work in different areas who are writing stories for the next newsletter. The administration has taken this newsletter, when's it coming out?
June first.
June first, and divided it among the entire administration staff to do different stories. So I just think this is so brilliant because these are staff members who, Jenny, for example, came and interviewed me about the library and what's going on there. And she's like, I haven't been to the library before. What a great way to get your staff out and around and become more knowledgeable about everything that's going on. I just commend you on, I'm just impressed, and I'm happy, and I'm proud. And that's all.
Thank you. Since you plugged the newsletter, I don't know if we spoke about it before, but so our staff, Danielle and Randy point on this, find how other communities are doing this. And of course, we were late to the party. Other communities are way ahead of us in figuring out how to do this and make it so that it's not a burden. So as it turned out, some time ago, a repository used to publish print area newsletters for schools and for communities. And when the paper was sold, it's like kind of the line of work they wanted to get out of. Understandable. It's a different business model today. And so other entities have stepped up into that void. And one particular company, Canton Data Print, is the one that we've selected. They already do the newsletters for many of these schools and surrounding townships and other communities and nonprofits and the like. And what will allow us to do is, they've automated this to a point where, you know, we just provide the stories that will get fitted into a template. And then around this template of stories will be advertising that will be sold by Canton Data Print to entities that wish to advertise in a publication that is going to go to twelve thousand different unique addresses in the city, including businesses. And just want to give us an opportunity to get our message out for important stories that have a lot of words or may not be particularly newsworthy, so to speak, when we talk about responsibility with, you know, leaf pickup and various little other items that we want to try to bring our level of citizen engagement up to a higher bar. And so it'll allow us to do that. So we think, based on what we've heard, that virtually every time an ad was sold in the adjoining community's paper was, do you know when North Canton's going to do theirs? Do you know when North Canton's going to do theirs? I think there's a pent-up demand for this. So we're anticipating it's approximately twelve pages. It's going to be old-fashioned newsprint. That'll help us keep the costs down, but it'll have the feel of an old-time town newspaper kind of thing. So anyway, we've submitted, as Christina was eloquently put, we've deleted up the writing responsibilities to everybody to write. And then as we get this first one out, we will be reaching out to other departments, including elected officials. In a year in which you're on the ballot, we won't allow you to have your name or anything in there, but if there was a particular story or point of view that you would like to cross with an anonymous byline, you know, this is information that we can get out there. So it's intended to be, everybody writes something, we'll review it, we'll edit it, we'll massage it, we'll drop it in the template, boom, done. Three weeks later, it's being carried to every doorstep. I personally then reviewed all the carrier routes and determined within our zip code what routes stay in, what ones go, so that we're not delivering an inordinate number of newsletters to people who are businesses who are not in the city of North Canton. There will be some overlap, but by using a carrier route system, it allows us the cheapest rate to deliver. So I weighed that against the cost of production and found that it's okay if somebody lives on Vincent Northwest on the east side of the street is playing, and on the west side is North Canton. People on the east side of the street are probably going to get the newsletter too. Just to give you an update on that, I forgot. Thank you for your mind.
Thank you. My turn. So usually, I give about a twenty-five minute presentation right now for all the new people. I'm just kidding, I'm not going to do that. But one of these days, I am going to give my department, my, my report first, my council report first, because everything that's said has already been taken. So I'll end by saying bye and support local. Final call for a new business? None. Looking at the meeting calendar coming up, we'll have a committee of the whole meeting on May first. We will have a regular council meeting on May eighth. We'll have a committee of the whole on the fifteenth and a regular council meeting on the twenty-second. On the twenty-ninth, well, no meeting due to Memorial Day. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?